This conference will now be recorded.
No call?
Mr. Genger?
Here.
Attorney General?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. At this time, if you would like to join us in prayer. Pledge allegiance. Well, I'm going to read from one of my devotionals. Our ever-present Lord. This is a time in life when we must learn to let go of the things we love, of possessions, of control, to let go of things that are precious to us. And we need to rest in your presence. And we are complete. As we take time to bask in the light of your love, we are able to relax more fully. Then we grasp our hands gradually, opening up, releasing our prized possessions into your care. You have been teaching us that it is possible to feel secure, even in the midst of the most difficult, painful circumstances, through staying aware of your continual presence with us. I rejoice that you are always with us and you never change. You are the same yesterday, today, and forever. As we release more and more things into your care, we are blessed by your assurance that we will never let go of our hand. We'd love to hear you speak to us through your word. I am the Lord your God, who takes hold of your right hand and says to you, "Do not fear; I will help you." Thank you for being my firm, secure foundation that no one and no circumstance can take away from me or any of us. We are, in this room, one family. We are, throughout this city, one family. We will always stay together in your steadfast and loving name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Consent to the agenda?
We would like to add, under the City Manager Department, item three, and it would kind of move the others down on that. So it would be consider approving a request from SCK Health for the release of funds from the Unpledge Healthcare Sales Tax Fund from the city of Arkansas City in the amount of $62,966.77. So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and signed. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved and signed that we approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Proclamations? Get the first one here. Whereas, the second full week of September has been designated as National Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week in order to annually celebrate and recognize professionals who provide support to millions of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Whereas, this celebration recognizes the dedication and the vital role of direct support professionals enhancing the lives, protecting the well-being of individuals with disabilities of all ages. And whereas, the community plays a role lifting up direct support professionals intricate in supporting and their needs of people with disabilities and their families through services, systems, across the United States. And whereas, the goal of the city is to equal opportunity and accessible advisory board properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities to gain full access to housing, employment, recreational activities that help to create productive and satisfying lives, and also to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 10th through 16th, 2023, as Direct Support Professional Recognition Week in the city of Arkansas City and call upon the citizens of Arkansas City to observe this week with the appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, encourages citizens of Arkansas City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning professionals who support individuals with intellectual development disabilities. Also have another proclamation.
Yes, the second proclamation is proclaim September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month in Arkansas City.
This is Ms. Presley Tharp. She's a student here at Arkansas City High School. And she's a very active member with the Hope Squad.
Office of the Mayor, Arkansas City, Kansas, proclamation. Whereas, National Suicide Prevention Month is an annual, month-long campaign in the United States to inform many aged health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and warning signs of suicide. And whereas, by going to the Republican Party and the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce stigma surrounding the topic as well as conduct the pursuit of mental health assistance and support for people attempting suicide. And whereas, part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screenings, including self-punishment and online tests regarding interested individuals to call or text 988 to the National Crisis Hotline and speak with the trained crisis counselor. And whereas, since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Month was born in 1975. And then, there will be National Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th of September. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Commissioner, this is in staff.
So, Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to invite Rod Philo, Tommy Bowman, Mike Frank, and Spencer Stover up to the front. So. As you're well aware, these gentlemen run the water and wastewater treatment plants. And last, well, the last week in August, 29th through 31st, they were at the AWWA and the KWEA Water Wastewater Conference. And they have an annual competition there. It's kind of a, I guess, trivia or that type of a thing. They asked some very difficult questions. And these gentlemen won first place out of Kansas. So they beat out all the other city in Kansas with their knowledge about water and wastewater treatment. So I was trying to think of a really good, hard question, but nothing that I could come up with the stump rod I knows.
Definitely.
But this just is to show the type of talent we have working for our city. These guys are top-notch best in the state with their knowledge of what's going on in water wastewater treatment. So I just wanted to express my thanks to them and congratulate them and make sure you guys were aware of how great they are and what they accomplished.
So what is, so what was the hardest question you got asked?
What is denitrification?
What is what?
Denitrification.
And the answer is?
That's when oxidized nitrogen is broken down into an oxitome, where there's bacteria in it.
Like to phone a friend?
Yeah, we are all called.
For the friend.
Okay, and oxit means the absence of free air, the presence of oxidized nitrogen.
Your team agrees you're correct. They're nodding their head.
Right now. So there's a bacteria that lives in the oxitome that's going, there isn't any air for me to use to eat. Or there's oxygen on this nitrogen. So actually, we'll go pull that oxygen off the nitrogen. We turn nitrate separate. Use it so they have energy to feed because there's still food for them to eat. And then, all that's left then is nitrate is N O two. So when you take the oxygen off, you just have N, which is nitrogen, which is a gas.
So what question did you miss?
No, they won.
I know, but you got them all 100% or did you not?
Well, there was a couple, neither team. But the last setup, whatever, very deal where we all conferred. And then, then you're down to three teams battling for second, third. And colleagues both like, oh yeah, those are.
So last year you were second, and this year you were first.
That's correct.
Let us give you a standing. Good job.
Well, they were very young, and they also did what. City, walking the city, where their support, their training, whatever training they need, and tech conferences, workshops, just which just happens to be more of a place to go. Voice, at least.
Absolutely. Thanks for watching. Picture.
Thank you guys for what you do.
Sure.
Glad to hear it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. What do you think the secret weapon was? Should we think about Spencer?
Consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as written. Any discussion? All proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay.
Ready for new business. So City Manager Department, item number one, is fully public hearing to receive public comment relating to the revenue. So I'll just briefly explain. We've been talking about this since May. Revenue neutral rate is the rate calculated by the county clerk that will generate the same amount of property tax dollars as the previous year or the next year based on the new valuation. So tonight is a chance for your citizens to talk to you about the revenue neutral rate.
We need to open the public hearing, I assume. So I'll make a motion we open the public hearing to receive public comment relating to the R and R revenue neutral rate.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We open the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. At this time, the floor is open to the public if you would like to make a comment. Please state your name and address.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Lloyd Paulson at 1825 North Eighth Street, talking to you tonight about the revenue neutral rate. You'll be voting on that momentarily. I hope that you will vote to not approve that revenue neutral increase in the tax burden of your citizens for a number of reasons. Primarily, there are citizens in this area that think that I make too much money as a retiree to care about the little folks. And I've spent too many years caring about the little folks who live, literally, off fixed income. Given the Medicare increases annually, given Medicaid increases occasionally, given all the other benefits that a citizen who is outwardly disabled, a child, all living on your government dollars, have to live within. Commissioners, you are also on a fixed income, believe it or not, because your taxpayers insisted that the revenue neutral rate be adopted and enforced. The part of that is, you have to make sure that you represent all of your constituents, the poor and the rich. The poor and the rich. The constituents back up. I've worked in city government. I've worked in state government and worked in federal government. Understand how public sector budgeting works. I've been told on many occasions to find a percentage reduction in my budget in order to make the budget work. I had a finance director once tell me, quote, "Lloyd, if every department was as frugal as you are, we would not be having a budget problem this year." My challenge to you, Commissioners, and the next item, is to find a way to live within the income so that you're not a burden to those who can't pay an extra $1,000 a year and a house payment, or an extra $50 a month and a water bill increase. Live within your budget so that we can live within ours. Thank you for your time.
There? Anyone else that would like to speak on this?
My name is Stephen Walker. I live at 1012 Northeast Street. I am one of those people that is on a fixed income. I have to make everything work within my budget. I can't go out and say, "I need something. I'm going to raise a rate." I can't do that personally. If I want something, I have to make it fit. I urge you guys to make it fit.
My name is Mike Holder. I live at 2012 Cedar Crest Court. And just a definition, revenue neutral. I have a finance background in the world. And I've never seen when somebody said revenue neutral to me as a chief financial officer, that meant revenue neutral. I had a budget of $1 million last year. I got to make a $1 million budget this year. I don't get to go up. And so that's my question. And I think, like along with everyone here, it's already spoken. You know, people who are on fixed incomes cannot live when something, and they say revenue neutral means price increase. That's not what it means. It means I paid the same thing I paid last year. And I think, you know, if it is revenue neutral in that definition, it should be neutral, not any more than it was in the previous year. The only thing that makes it goes up this year, which is quite interesting, is the assessment values that you see. That is not revenue neutral at all. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
So my name is Ben Seaton. I reside at 6797 312th Road, just outside of city limits. But I do quite a bit of shopping here in town. So this will obviously impact me. The way that it impacts me is if property rates go up in town, then everybody's going to pass on an increase in their products and services in order to not absorb that cost. So that is an impact on everyone that shops in this town. We are raising prices on everything. I'm still young. I'm still in the middle of my career. I'm not on a fixed income, near as much as somebody that has retired or has some disability. But my money is shrinking month over month over month. It isn't just this increase. It is increases across the board on everything. So just for flavor, I moved here in October of '22. My taxes for my property was $2,000. I get the assessment of where we expect it to be by the end for this year, and it is $3,200. And again, it's not just this. It is, everyone is raising rates, and then they reassessed my property. I just bought it and moved in. I will tell you that I work in business. If I had a supplier that tried to pass on an 8% increase, I would be asking the supplier, "Are you in financial trouble?" Because that's the action of somebody that is scrambling to try to make ends meet. And if you are, I would ask that you please let somebody know because I have young kids in school, and I need to get them to a different school district. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak on this subject?
My name is Charles Sweetie, 1023 North A. I have two questions. If you do not pass the revenue neutral tonight, and it goes back to what the county says we should bring in, have you made provisions on what you're going to cut back on moving forward? I know there's, you know, two mills is a lot. It's going to mean, it's going to mean a lot. And the second question is, if you do pass the revenue neutral, next year, does that become the base that we have to work from?
That would be correct. The, whatever taxes are levied this year would become their new neutral revenue rate next year. It is.
And his first question, do we have Plan B?
That would be all of us working together.
Yeah.
To know what services or things you would want to cut.
Anyone else? If not, at this time, I move that we close this public hearing.
My second.
We moved in second that we close this public hearing. Any discussion? Anything? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so 1A of item number one is considered a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And this is a roll call.
So Jennifer, am I wrong? Did we not vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate when you put this budget together?
Correct. You, it was your intent to exceed that we had to get to the county clerk by July 20th.
And so I, like everybody else, understand the taxes are going up in every direction and costs are going up. What I had to weigh against is putting gas in my car versus putting gas in 100 vehicles or 60 vehicles that the city has. I don't know how many we have. But gassing each one of those up and watching the price of gas go up and every other service go up. Every gallon of diesel that goes into the trash trucks, everything we have. And so I had to weigh that against what we have going on now for me. I recognize that the evaluations are, we don't put our budget in until the evaluations come out, right? We kind of start our budget, but we don't.
Yeah, so evaluations aren't certified until November, actually.
Okay, but I mean, they're expected. And so that's what I'm trying to learn and understand is about how that process is done. But I watch the expenses go up for my home, and then I look at the expenses for the city, what we spend on fuel, what we spend on oil, what we spend on any single product. It all goes up. Every time we have a water leak, the sleeves, the price of the sleeves have gone up. And we have to have them, so we have to get them. And at whatever cost, we do the best we can, staff does, to get the lowest price for the product that's going to work. We have a lot of services that we have here, amenities to live here, things that are available to us. And all of those came with increased costs in the last couple of years. I don't, we have a sheet here. Scotty was trying to explain to me. I don't really understand it, but it's an inflation. It's what you bought at this time and what you can get with the same thing. I go to the grocery store. I watch the price go up of everything. Like you were saying, it costs me more to shop here. But I don't know how to value that up against the multiplication that we have for providing the services for everybody.
That's going. Well, I personally am on a fixed income. And I'm like a lot of people. I don't know how I'm going to pay my taxes this year. But I also know that everything's going up. And there would be ways to cut. Okay, y'all, take care of your own trash. We don't have a public entity that picks up your trash. How much more are you going to spend by driving out to the landfill and paying the landfill yourself for this service? I have a diesel pickup that I drive. I have to have it because I carry a big load. Had the oil changed in it? Going to learn how to do it myself, believe me. What it cost me a year ago to do it was about $100. It was $196, and I had it done this week. That's, that's a big amount. Makes you want to not move, not do anything. But we all know, we like the things that we've got. And for you, sir, living outside of town, where are you going to go that things are not going up in other cities? That's, that's, you know, we all, we all are going to have to deal with inflation. So.
Well, I think one thing, you know, we lowered the mill levy, two mills, which is not a lot, but at least it's a start. You know, it's lower for taxes. I mean, by two mills this year, I mean, that's, that's, you know, I mean, that's, at least, we're trying to, we're trying to do the right thing. What we need to do is grow the city on sales tax and not property tax. And that's what we're trying to do. And if we can lower the mill levy every year, we lowered it two mills this year. Maybe we can lower another two, three next year. At least it's on a trend. We're trying to do the right thing with lowering properties taxes. So, I mean, even though we got inflation around us, and it's, it's, everything's upside down. I mean, the whole economy's upside down. The whole country's upside down, you know? But it was just, it is what it is, and we got to deal with what we got to deal with. But at least it's a start, you know? Two mills is two mills, you know? That's $140,000, isn't that right, Jennifer? Yeah, so I've lowered our two mills, so at least it's a start, so.
So that two mills, are you saying, lessen the out-of-pocket for the citizens?
Well, it lowers, you know, lowers your taxes.
I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be less than it was last year?
Well, no, dollar-wise, no. No, dollar-wise, it won't.
I've heard from, without any one particularly being here at my invitation, I've heard from a voice that reflects the constituents that I interface with. the constituents that I interface with. I, I've, I've heard someone say, we understand, you know, things cost more if we're going to continue the same level of service. I've heard from folks that say, but functionally, functionally, when we talk about this, we say, talk about salient things like, who's going to pick up the trash? Ben Franklin said, penny saved, penny earned. Sometimes it's not the hundred dollars or the thousand dollars or the ten thousand dollars. Sometimes it's the penny. Functionally, the lectures I've gotten, the, when I stopped in the grocery store to chat with someone says, we're not basing this off of some arbitrary number. We're basing this off of the action that we took with the budget on last year. By exceeding, we increased our total revenue, which becomes our new base. And now we're here again saying we're going to exceed that, which will become the next new base. We are the level of government where the rubber meets the road. None of us got a chance to say anything of, of worth in Congress when Congress passed their budget and increased it. None, none of us got a chance to say anything in Topeka when state legislature passed their budget with the increase. So they did, let me see, federal, so they did. State, so they did. The county appraiser doing his, setting the valuations, didn't ask any of us if he thought, if we thought he was, he, she?
She.
She was correct in their arbitrary increase. So she did. The only place where we have this discussion and our citizens come, look us face to face tonight. I, and I appreciate the civil tone, the, 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 the rational discourse right here at City Hall. And at some point in time, we got to look at that whole spectrum from the federal government to the state government to the county government, to the local units of government. We have to look at what capitalism does to inflation. It's somewhere someone's gotta be, there's gotta become a consensus voice that says, that's it, you know? And then you start saying, so what we do at our house, so we don't, and we don't, we don't increase our budget. We say, we're gonna not, we're gonna just cut the times we go out to eat or we just don't go out to eat at all. We're going to leader our trips. We're going to coordinate things so that we move in concert and use one vehicle and we can use one instead of two sorts of things. And I think our citizens are us to speak along the lines of something that says, if we tried and failed, we tried to look for every penny that we could to avoid, to avoid choosing to again have a slight increase in our budget. I, I think they want to hear that. I think they want to hear that. And I think if we say we looked at every penny governing body, if we looked at every little thing to say, is it essential? Is there something besides trash that we do? And then said, well, we just can't find a penny or a dime anywhere. And I think we get a little bit less pushback. Somebody wants to hear some level, taxing level in this nation say, not this time. I, I just, that's what I feel is they want somebody to say, not this time. At least, or at least not us. And, and those are, those are the voices that I've heard from. We understand inflation. Inflation is somewhat artificial. Inflation is driven by a desired profit motive, okay? Or a gender objective, okay? And so prices are set to hit profit objectives. Profit objectives are driven by shareholder expectations. Nobody wants less, but none of those folks run the risk of saying, if we get too high, I'm just wanting to put that out there, if we get too high, it could cost us home. It could cost us our home. Get to the point we can't pay it, it'll cost us our home. We, we are, we are more and more a retirement type community. So we're more and more going to get that level of pushback. Better if it gets too high, it's going to cost us our home. I, I think, I think that that's the voice that we're hearing tonight. And I think the greater concern is that if we win, we, if we win, we exceed the revenue neutral rate, we set a new and higher base for the next fiscal year. It's tough, it's tough, but I think the citizens in our Kansas City, the citizens in Kansas and the citizens in the United States are looking for some unit of government that says, not this time. I mean, this is a very, this is not something easy going on right now. And I do know that us, specifically the city staff in each department have looked through the budget. They've had their budget questioned, they've had things pulled that they don't want pulled. But also know they understand that what the concerns that the citizens have and that a lot of us have is, what do we absolutely need? What are the needs and the wants? And the wants have been taken out and the questions have been asked. And I know if you talked to a lot of the department heads, there's a lot of other things they wish they could put in the budget every year and it gets cut every year. And we try to cut stuff that some of us would rather keep this or take that out. But in the end, we're trying to do the best because Commissioner Jennings is right. This community needs to continue to grow, but there are more citizens on fixed incomes now. And that is a concern and that's a concern for, I think, all of us up here and the department staff. And I know the city staff and I know all those individuals look at all those things. And like Commissioner Warren said, we are trying to grow, we are trying to get a different source of quote, income or revenue, I should say, for the city. And so, I mean, it's not something that the city departments hands us a budget and we just say, yep, looks good. I mean, it gets picked through and I know the staff and all of us look through it. And you even have some of you citizens look through the budget and the proposed budgets out there and call commissioners and say, what's this, what's that? So it's not a, it's, it's a thorough process, but I think it's what Commissioner Jennings was saying, that everyone's trying to keep this thing minimal. We're not trying to have wants as needs. We in the department and what the citizens have told us are the needs they need.
I might, just to put in perspective what we're talking about with this neutral revenue rate. So there's three, three different levies that we would have. And the general fund is four million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand through seventy-one. So, and, and the general fund is where we have police and fire, those types of things, streets, parks, all of that. So of that four million, two hundred thousand, we're talking about levying for that. That doesn't even cover police and fire, which the combined in this budget's just shot, it's like eight point, eight point six million or eight point seven million?
Or police and fire?
Yeah, combined. So the, those taxes that we're talking about levying don't even, don't even cover the cost to operate police and fire. So just, that's when I put that in perspective, it kind of help, you know, what we're up against.
I have a question. If you have a spend, I will call a budget. If you have a spend of eight million dollars and you only have four million dollars coming in, where is the balance of that coming from?
Other funds.
Okay, so other funds are from where?
So there's, there's different funds we get from, from state. We get, we do transfer some money out of utilities to offset, to keep the property tax, property tax down. There's other, you know, just things like that, just numerous different funds that the, that we get bits and pieces from to help out, make the difference, so.
So it comes from other places other than somebody's back pocket around here, most likely.
Some of it.
My state taxes or federal taxes or whatever.
Right.
But it's coming from other funds other than folks in the city.
Correct.
When you talk about other people, how much of that is grants? And how much of the grants have a larger than twenty-five percent match?
Well, most grants do have some type of a match and I don't have that number. I don't know if you can pull it off the top of your head, no?
One, the fifteenth street bridge was like an eighty percent match?
Yeah, uh, no, it would have been like a, that one was, that's the fifteenth street bridge was a fixed amount of money, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand. And it was a four hundred and almost five hundred thousand dollar project.
So fifty thousand, fifty percent?
Yeah, that one. Now, the mill and overlay.
Some are more than twenty is what I think you're getting.
The mill and overlay start hopefully this week, hopefully this week, yeah, tomorrow, over here on Madison. And I think that was a ten percent match on that one.
Want me to motion on this?
I, I retired seven years ago. I lived in Kansas Valley, I am Lehigh Valley. And the taxes that I pay now are higher than the taxes I paid in Lehigh Valley. And on top of that, I had to pay a one percent income tax to townships, which I don't include. And the services I got or left tax was, first of all, every neighborhood had a, had a playground in. If you built a new addition, it had a playground. Secondly, because we got about eighty inches of snow every year where I lived, yeah, I could walk out at, at five o'clock in the morning and my sneakers, my street had been shoveled with snow. The only thing I had to do was shovel my driveway and shovel the air. If I had leaves, the fall, which we had a lot of leaves, you rake the leaves to the street and they come by and they vacuumed them up. If I had branches that fall from trees and stuff, you had to cut it to a certain length, bundled up and they come up. That was all included. I've lived here for seven years and I haven't seen anybody from the city come in my street yet. So I know, I'm not sure what kind of services I'm paying for. I, I do, but, you know, I don't see it and I saw it there, so I didn't have a problem with it. But I also know that the biggest part of my property taxes went to the school district, which was probably the number two school district in the state of Pennsylvania. So I didn't have a problem with it. And we had sidewalks, all level, always nice, well kept. And I don't see that. I just don't see that, I'm sorry. And I'm paying about, about the same amount of money.
We have citizens here that you guys want to go above revenue, revenue neutral. And they see, and I know that it was grant money or whatever, but they see four brand new police cars this year. They're, they're going to say, why, why is our revenue going, why are our taxes going up? You can have to increase it by buying four new cars.
The cars, they're replacing.
That's what the citizens see.
And they're replacing cars that were becoming maintenance problems. And I think we all want to.
I have a car with a maintenance problem, I can't go buy a brand new one.
I, I think we have a responsibility to respond to emergencies, so we want our police cars to.
I'm just saying, that's what people see.
Okay.
You want more money, but people see brand new vehicles.
I will say with regards to Mr. Calder, he's, his concerns are expressed by many east of bypass that don't see a lot of road repairs, they don't see a lot of, they have water issues all the time, they don't have sidewalks. I, I've heard it for four years now. So I, his concerns and frustrations are probably those of many that live on the east side that don't have the, the water, one line out there, if it gets shut down, there's no water. There's no sidewalks to ride bikes into town. When we don't see those things on the east side, and yes, some of those are promised before any of us were even on the commission or I don't even know if I was in school yet, when some of those things might have been promised to us when we got, I mean, I guess it might have been eight or nine, I got annexed. So I see some of these things and I, I understand the concerns with the amount that gets of taxes individuals pay and they don't see services that you would think they would have with that taxes. So I, the frustrations on, I, I hear a lot, especially when that east chestnut pump has issues. I know when it happens because I usually have two or three phone calls or texts within about two or three minutes, so. Probably before it even gets out, so I understand the, the frustration.
We've been trying to work on a water tear out east of town.
Well, I know we are, but I think his point is there's a lot, we, a lot gets paid in and they don't see street repair. I mean, so I think, I understand the frustrations with Mr. Calder.
Yeah, I live out there too, I understand.
But I'm just saying, I'm saying services that I would normally get, the snow removal, that, that it doesn't snow eighty inches a year, I forgot if that did. But, you know, leaf and branches, you know? I even see the leaf now, up a window with a storm, they got the branches all cut, they've cut to a certain size, most of them, so they can pick them up after terrible windstorm they had up there. But, I mean, I don't see branches like that, but other people do, though. Other people do.
We did have a lot of tree removal here in our city after the storms. I've seen them up all every street. We had a small storm that was, they did do a lot of tree removal. And it was supposed to be cut to a certain side and put by the bird and they picked them up. I see did a lot of stuff that people don't see because it was a concentrated area, but the downtown area you can see in first and third had a lot of tree downs.
Well, what, uh, I've heard a lot tonight and, and it's all important. But I think on the other side of the coin, you know, I think that the city manager and it's done, trying to do a good job of trying to keep the expenses down and stuff the best we can. And I know it's, you know, this place is upside down, everybody's upside down. But I'm going to make a motion, we can stay with a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call, look.
Commissioner Giger?
No.
Commissioner Bennings?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Rogers?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Can I have a comment?
No. Motion failed. That's a darn award, Jennifer. Eliminates the next.
Madam Mayor, could we have staff outline the ramifications of a no vote on the proposal to exceed the revenue neutral rate?
Can you do that, Jennifer?
Sure, yeah. So the next step would be to do the budget hearing, which we can still do, however, we cannot adopt the budget as presented tonight. But if you want to go down to their revenue neutral rate, we could adopt the budget at that, so.
We, we can be able to do that tonight, because we're gonna have to really go through and figure out the cuts are gonna come from.
Well, if that's what they want, then those cuts have to come. So I have ideas.
You guys have ideas where you want it to come from?
I believe, I'm thinking about.
I think we would like to be part of the process.
Okay.
So, in other words, we can go ahead with the budget thing tonight, then?
Yeah, you can still hold the hearing, you just can't adopt it as presented.
Having said, I move we open a public hearing on the budget. Second. We'll have a hearing on the budget.
I'm trying to still call them.
Any discussion on that?
I mean, until we see what really the budget's gonna be and what's in it, it's hard to really do a whole lot. I mean, other than just sitting here saying, get this out or get that out. I mean, it's gonna be really hard to.
We're going to cut down to the R and R, which is the 63, because you voted against exceeding it, so it becomes, the budget becomes the R and R. So we'll be cutting down to the 63, whatever it was.
Oh, seven or whatever.
I'm sorry, and that's actually what I was trying to get, the clarification on what the ramifications are. So we revert to the assess, whatever you call it, that we got from, the estimated allotment that we got from the county, okay? And by this vote. Okay. Thank you.
We move to second, we open a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on the budget, may do so from the audience.
Saying no.
Mayor, Commissars, again, I come to you with a voice of concern for the public. And as I have listened to meetings, not necessarily just Arc City, but the County Commission, the hearings in Topeka, and in the Beltway, our fiscal responsibility voices in those elected places are minimal. And I am happy to hear the previous question addressed in a physically responsible manner. Moving forward, you're gonna have to have another hearing for another budget. And if you've adopted a revenue neutral posture in the previous question, you need to have a budget that matches that posture. As a physical conservative, you cannot have, on one hand, a revenue neutral posture and increased spending willy-nilly on the other side.
I don't think you have to worry, it's gonna be a tight, it's gonna be tough.
It can be done, but it's gonna be.
We're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna have to now. I mean, that's, I mean, that's.
And I think what people don't understand is that we have this year 70 mills.
Yes.
Okay? Our mills are not as valuable as the county, the college, the school district, or the state.
And that was gonna be.
So we're operating off of, I believe, $70,000 per mill. Winfield gets $81,000 per mill. The first six mills out of 70 go to the library.
Thank you.
The next five mills go to debt services for things we already have. So we are operating off 59 mills, and trying to make that work, keep vehicles running, keep services provided. And I understand what he said, Mr. Colter said, when he said, I don't see them out here. We fight for that in this room all the time, to get, get a tower out there, make sure we've got dual water lines out there. We have no curbing. I wasn't here when curbing didn't go in, or septics? You guys are not on.
Or septic out.
Yes. So all of that was said, none of that was done, but I wasn't here. I can't make up for all those years while we're trying to also fix the water lines that are 100 years old and should have been replaced.
Yes.
Nobody in this room was here when those water lines were laid in. And so, one thing at a time, one step at a time. But nobody's up here just spending money because it's the fun thing to do. We're trying to do it because, and we've got to be responsible for everybody. As you stated, the rich and the poor. We have to be responsible to help all the citizens achieve what they need to be successful.
In public sector budgeting, you can achieve goals reasonably if you, I hate to use the term play your card for that, because that seems to me to be a call for you to invest in a lottery. It is not. It is to be physically responsible with the dollars that you spend. And I'm proud of this body right now, tonight, for telling Topeka and telling Washington DC, we believe in physical responsibility. Thank you for that. Because while this meeting is recorded, and you had a roll call vote at the last question, the citizens come November next year will be voting based on what they perceive you've done for them or against them. I hope that the electorate in Arc City does not embarrass themselves with less than 100% turnout for the polls.
Good luck.
Good luck is right. If you can have 100% turnout, it's time to do it. The idea of being physically responsible, I hope that the citizens of Arc City will pay attention to what you've just done, because it's commendable, very commendable. But I also hope the citizens of Arc City will be prudent and be observant about your, what we have to do to make this burg successful. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. So, so we, our action effectively, if you understand Charlie Brown and Lucy, is as they were making their approach, they again full swing, football back.
Yes.
What I would hope to have heard, more so, unfortunately, in the way of the agenda flows right now, isn't it? What I would hope to have heard in the aftermath of our vote was a little bit of what the citizens think we could do with a little less of. And, and, and don't go for the easy targets. If, I understand that, I'm sorry, madam, if you indulge me. I understand, you look at a department that gets new cars, and you say, well, you got money to buy new cars. But on the other hand, if someone's smashing in the window to your house, and you're calling 911 and wanting somebody to get out there and protect you, you don't want to hear, but the car won't start. You know, or the transmission just dropped out, we've been trying to nurse it along. So, so, so you, do you want police response, or do we are reliable, or, or are we marginal good enough? Do you fire response? So now we're at, we don't want to, we don't want the, our taxes to go up. So then what services?
The question.
Are the citizens willing to take at a diminished, they won't go away, they won't go away, but at a diminished value?
And the question is well placed, because while the citizens don't want their taxes to go up, prudent citizens don't want their services to go down. And moving here as an outsider, I've been very pleased with the services that I get from Arc City and police power and EMS and public works. The sanitation workers get out there every Wednesday and pick up my, my garbage. And all kinds of weather, and hot and cold. And the library maintains a customer service amidst of a pandemic, amidst of having other, the tractors coming to their budget, like a building that's falling down around here. But they still maintain services that I contend are at a, as good as, if not better than some communities twice and three times their size. Again, thank you for your service.
Functionally, if the sequence of this agenda had been to talk about what we could do based on maintaining the current budget, and asking the question, what services, what services are we willing to see diminished? Continued but diminished, we might get a different response. But now what we're asking is whichever characters, whichever character, go out and put the football down again for the next kickoff, without the expectation of it being yanked out of the way. So now, we understand that, but please don't let the meeting, this meeting be the end of it, because now, we need to know, and they need to know, what we're willing to do with at a slightly diminished value, or the presence we're willing to accept at a slightly diminished level, in order to not exceed R and R and continue on. All right. So that's, that's where we are now. That's what you've now asked us to do. And are we, are we still in open?
We're open session with the public.
Ken Herrer, 1313 North First Street. Mr. Jennings asked the question of what you can do. Has the city considered all of the property that they own that's not used, that we mow, we take care of, we maintain? I know, last commission meeting, you gave the Sleep Edition ballpark, but that's for development. The land out at the roundabout, that is some revenue gonna come in. But I think the city still has a lot of property that spends money, we're spending money to maintain or hang on to it. Have you considered that? Will you consider that? I don't know how much the city has all.
Yeah, I think there's a list of certain areas that are already, if someone wants a, correct me if I'm.
Land banks, the land bank can handle quite a bit of property, yes.
I think that's something that the commission needs to consider.
And if a develop, and we've always been open, if a developer wants to come in and build a house on those parks, that land, or whatever it is, that the land bank properties, don't say park, the land bank properties, then they're there to be taken and maintained, and someone can build on those land bank properties.
Well, I know the city does a lot of mowing in the summer. I've, I've seen this commission authorize lots of money for mowing machines. And something that I haven't heard any discussion about, I'd like you to consider it.
So, I, from the dance here, functionally, but you remember the citizen outcry at the chance of taking some of that idle land and putting it back into some revenue-producing function, houses and property. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking, I'll, who said that? I think Mr. Colson said that? We, we don't want our taxes to go up, but we don't want our services to go down. And those are a contradiction. Those are a contradiction in a, in an environment where everybody, all the environment around us wants more money for their goods and services. So all the supply parts, all of the, the resources that the city needs to provide the services, everybody, we can't, no, what we can't do is we can't control what vendors and tollers charge for their services. So we still have to do, but, but we're sitting here, I'm saying, and just a couple of weeks ago, we didn't receive overwhelming support when we were saying, here's idle land, we're gonna put it into some revenue-producing function. Here's idle land, we're gonna put, and everybody, well, many were critical of that. I'm just saying, at some point in time, we either have to get behind moves to progress and generate revenue and grow the city, or we have to accept that the way to do it is to put the burden on the taxpayers' backs. Those are the options that we have. If they hadn't done it, if they hadn't done it two decades ago, we could have offered to give away our $50 a month salary to help balance the budget.
They already did that. So, so we're at zero. We don't have anything we can give back to help with the cost of operating government. Five times zero is zero.
Sir, you made it speak.
I've been through 50 years of budgets up and down, inflation and everything. I've been through some serious times of budgets that will come in, and the revenue's not gonna be there to support those budgets. And we have been, I've been told, and have told people, say, okay, you're gonna have to learn how to work with what you got and deliver, and deliver the same level of service that you did beforehand. Now, how do you do that? It is hard to do. But you find creative ways about going and doing. And that's what you have to do when you sit down and go back to the budget. You got to deliver the same level of service with less money. So how do I go about doing that? You know, how can, how can I make that budget item more productive, people more productive? I mean, we had methods and processes, like going through Six Sigma or whatever, to make, to make those things happen. But when you, when push comes to shove, and you want that, want that bonus to end of the year, you better deliver the budget, okay? Because, and you better give the same level of service that you gave before, or whatever was in your mission statement, you delivered. And you couldn't cut those things back. So that's just what, I, I know it's a dilemma, it's hard a limit to do. But you just have to go back and deliver what you need to deliver to the citizens. Thank you.
Anyone, any further discussion from the audience? Now, at this time, I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. We don't vote on that. I think we're ready for number three.
Number three, it's consider of bringing a request.
A public hearing for the budget. Yeah, we probably need to vote on the budget at the.
I think we voted. Jennifer said we couldn't.
Yeah, I know, the budget amount, revenue rate, we'll just have to adjust the budget to.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you want?
A wait, or do you want?
It's up to them, they can.
I think her. Basically, you were not voting on individual items, is what I think you're getting at. You're saying the budget is gonna be this amount of money, and that's what we're voting on, the budget, the overall budget. Now, how we get to that budget can be laid out in the next week.
Your deadline for the cap?
September 20th, and our next meeting is September 19th, so it would have to be adopted that night.
But the, the amount can't change now. So, I mean. So, I mean, regardless of the amounts or not, we're not voting on this or this item getting taken out or cut, just the total amount now.
And we got to stay into it.
Yeah, we got to stay within that, that amount, so.
That being said, you will make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance adopting a twenty twenty four budget for the city of Arkansas, Kansas City, um, I guess based off the R and R.
At the revenue
At the, at the R and R, who, at the neutral rate.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, that we adopt the budget for two thousand twenty four to match the R and R. Any further discussion?
I ask two seconds.
Jay, Commissioner.
And we'll proceed to vote. It's a roll call vote.
Mr. Ganger?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
Yes.
The ordinance is in the package, yeah. I can do the resolution. I can't do
I'm at. Yes, I'm in.
I'll look at it.
Animated. I'm in animated cartoon mode and I can hear Bullwinkle saying to Rocky, hey, Rock, watch me pull a rabbit out of a hat.
Now, now.
Okay, consider approving a request from STK Health to release for release of funds from unfledged healthcare tax fund from the city of sixty two thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars and seventy seven cents.
Uh, so this was a request from Debbie Hockenberry, the hospital CFO. They requested all available funds in the unfledged care assistance. Yeah, I believe they provided their charity care write offs. Substantiate documentation.
I'll make a motion, we approve the request from STK Health for release of funds from the unfledged healthcare sales tax fund from the city of Arkansas, Kansas City, amount of sixty two thousand nine sixty six seventy seven.
Second. When we were doing second, is there any further discussion? And we will proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item number four is a resolution adopting reference the city's twenty twenty three and repealing resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh seven dash three five five.
So this is a, the biggest, the biggest piece of this is the stormwater, uh, stormwater fee adjustments. There's also numerous cleanup items and there are things that aren't in place anymore and need to be cleaned up. I mean, they're all highlighted in red. Currently, we have two stormwater rates. Uh, we have a three dollar per month for residential. And we have a six dollar per month for non-residential. So that's anything non-residential from the smallest, uh, commercial building, clear up to Walmarts and the Creekstones that pay six. So, um, we have a significant wastewater, or not wastewater, stormwater infrastructure in our community and the levy system that takes quite a bit of money to, um, to take care of. We currently, um, have a hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars a year revenue to, to maintain all that. Um, plus we transfer fifty thousand dollars from sewer, um, to help with that as well. Um, as you guys know, we're getting ready to recertify the levy system. And that's going to be an expensive process, um, that, uh, we don't have the revenue sources for right now to take care of. Um, we also have all the maintenance that needs to happen on all the levies around the community, all the stormwater system, all the the, uh, piping underground. There's, there's just a lot of things in stormwater around the community that, uh, we're behind on. Um, deferred maintenance needs to be taken care of, just like we have in the water and the wastewater, all that's the things that need to be taken care of that haven't been for numerous years. So what we did was is we, uh, did a stormwater, uh, rate analysis and we, uh, came up with five classes. Um, the first class, um, is the residential still.
All residential, right?
All residential.
Sure, yeah.
And then four dollars a month up from three. Then we went to, then we jumped to non-residential. So we have, um, all non-residential properties with impervious surfaces, uh, less than five thousand, um, square feet is twelve dollars a month. Non-residential users with impervious surfaces between five thousand one and twenty five thousand square feet would be twenty four dollars a month. Then the class four, non-residential would be impervious surfaces that is twenty five thousand to a hundred thousand square foot, forty eight per month. And then the final one would be any non-residential user with impervious surfaces greater than a hundred thousand square feet. That's ninety six dollars a month. Um, the, that proposed structure, um, we anticipate to bring in about three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars a year. Um, and then we're going to be phasing out the transfer from sewer into the stormwater over a period of the next four years so that we can continue to keep those dog storm or wastewater dollars and wastewater where they need to be. Because like I said, we have, we know we have a lot of issues there with collection system that then needs to be, needs to be dealt with. So that's kind of what we're looking at. Um, we also in this, in the rate structure, we would have a three percent annual increase to offset the inflation that happens, um, with, uh, the materials and cost of labor and all that that goes on to it. And, um, so that's what we propose.
So the residential will go from three dollars to four dollars a month.
Correct.
And then the commercials will be based off the square foot of their building, basically.
Uh, we heard there's served concrete parking and all that, yeah.
So a smaller commercial will now pay less than the bigger commercial with regards to parking lot size and building. So it's probably more fair based off actual sizes instead of just one flat fee.
It'd be based on what, what particular property contributes to the stormwater system, yeah.
Well, I mean, this is something we've looked at for, we've talked about for a long time doing it. It's something the city's looked into and we're trying to keep again, keep the residential low based off all the concerns that have been addressed tonight and the ones that all of us are very much aware of. And also, yeah, making it fair to just how it should be. I mean, a, a smaller commercial shouldn't be paying the size of a larger retail store commercial for stormwater. It should probably be based off of like, and the permeable surfaces or whatever it was. So, you know, and I know that levy is a major certification process and it can be a big hit. So it'd be nice to have some funds for that. So if we ever have any issues with our levy system, which again keeps our town from flooding or having issues like that, um, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt by reference to city's twenty twenty three comprehensive fee schedule and repeal resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh seven dash three five five nine. Second.
I'm second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? And then we'll proceed to vote. Vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Item number five. The ordinance authorizing the city of Arkansas, Kansas City, Kansas, in conjunction with other participating governmental entities to enter into an interlocal agreement for the provision of CaliFirst, a countywide economic development service.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I was before you, December of last year, requested an extension of the previous agreement that was entered into in twenty seventeen. That is now set to expire in December of this year. So I am requesting, um, that we enter into a four-year interlocal agreement. It has been adopted by the city of Winfield and the county as well in previous meetings last month. Um, we continue to actively engage in economic development services on behalf of the city of Arc City uh, for expansion and retention, entrepreneurship, new business, workforce, uh, apprenticeship programs. There's a new apprenticeship program that we're looking at, uh, childcare, housing, working with our legislators. Um, so that interlocal agreement would end December of twenty twenty seven. Any questions about any of the services or CaliFirst?
Other two entities have already ratified a four-year.
City of Winfield and, and Cali County.
I mean, lockstep with them, I would think.
What?
I said, I would think we would want to be in lockstep with the other two governing units.
Considering what we just did with the R and R. What's the dollar amount?
Forty five.
Forty, it's forty five thousand. And this is not asking for an increase. So if we need to increase services, we'll look at our business partnerships.
I keep getting asked what CaliFirst has done for this part of the area.
Sure.
I know you have grant programs that would help, but they're complicated.
They are.
And we have people who would apply for them from here, but they can't, they can't manage through that paperwork.
Okay.
And they need help.
Sure. And that's a service that CaliFirst can provide. So, and working through that. And grants are such a complicated process as we were talking about earlier with matching fund requirements. So trying to weed through that and, and learn what grants are actually available and learning what dollars might be available for matching grants to match those with people and to help them through that process. So that is a service that CaliFirst provides. Uh, in addition to, I mean, other things that we're doing in regards to expansion and retention. It takes about fifteen site visits to land a new company to the area and we've engaged in eight in the past year, which is more than a predecessor had completed. So we're trying to get those site visits, uh, made and, and match those industries with industry that we already have so that they're actually supporting mowing as well. Does that make sense?
I, I mean, I've been involved in I represented for the city on Struthers Field and knowing how the Cali and Winfield and the city of Arkansas, Kansas City worked with CaliFirst and seeing how there is a partnership there. And yes, we are separate entities, but yet we still benefit from growth within this community, whether it's here in Arc City or at Struthers or Winfield. I mean, it still has a positive outcome for the community as a whole. And I say community, it's Cali and maybe in surrounding a little bit of that. And seeing what CaliFirst has done with that and continues to try to bring to this community or to this area, you know, I, I've, I've been a supporter of it and I would, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Arkansas, Kansas City, Kansas, in conjunction with other participating government entities to enter into a new interlocal agreement for the provisions of CaliFirst, a countywide economic development service.
Second.
Moved in seconding. Is there any further discussion? Saying now, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
No. Motion carried.
Okay, it does require signatures. Would you prefer to do that now or later?
Um, I don't have anything prepared.
Okay.
On our side unless you have something.
It's just the signatures that go with the interlocal agreements that it can be submitted to be at any general.
Yeah, we can do that part, but I don't have minutes or anything ready for that piece. If you're comfortable.
Have a choice.
You could defer vice mayor. I have to.
Not yet, it's intro. Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Six. Ready for number six?
Okay, item number six is a building permit valuation.
Got me there? Sure.
So, one of the things that I've been looking at and the commission's talked about is, Randy and I have visited with it over a year, is building permits. A lot of people tell us that they don't want to do anything to their homes because the valuation will go up. How many people have heard that? So, um, the state of Kansas has a law that says maintenance not be used for valuation. So I would like to see us add a box on the permit that says maintenance not applicable for valuation. Um, so if you're replacing a roof, you have hail damage, the insurance company replaces your roof, you have to get a permit, that's maintenance. Painting, which you do not have to get a permit for, but is maintenance. Um, windows, these kinds of things. So if the box is on the permit and it says maintenance, not applicable for valuation. The second part to that is they're all sent to the county from this off, from Mark City. They send them directly to the county. So if you file for a permit for anything on your property, it goes directly to the county. And, uh, I'm asking that anything that is not valuation sensitive, so if you were adding a room, adding square footage, upgrading to the point that there's a significant difference. So you went from this roof to a high-end two hundred year roof. That would be significant. And so I'm, propose that we, uh, change the permit so that the word maintenance is on there and we follow the state guidelines as to what maintenance is. And it be stated that it's not applicable for valuation consideration.
I think we've discussed this several times ago. Last Friday. I, I personally feel like maybe if people had this understanding and it was reported in the paper, what we're trying to do, that it would end up, maybe people would try to start taking better care of their homes. We can hope.
So, so Larry, how would we need to do this tonight? We, we got it for discussion, but how would we make it?
I, I think that the discussion is, is really all you need. Uh, give us a chance to work with staff and bring it back to the next work session and see what you think of the progress there. What do you think of the, the language for the box?
I think what's trying to be said here is every permit that's filled out is automatically sent to the county. There are some permits that legally do not have to be sent to the county. And I think that's what Commissioner Ganger is saying is those that don't have to be sent to the county don't send in hopes that don't send in hopes that people will start taking care of their homes. Cause some people say, well, I did this and my value went up. Well, it's because you sent that permanent. Well, if we don't send that permanent, the value still goes up, it's one less. Well, it wasn't, it wasn't obviously what we did, it wasn't with the city. I think that's what she's trying to get at with, with this motion. I still think, I think it's a great idea. I still think we're all taxpayers, so I don't think any of us like our values going up unless we're getting ready to sell the house or if we're getting a loan. I think that's about the only time a new wife said praise value going up. So when they're paying taxes, we obviously want the value to be low. But I mean, I still think there'll still be some, the citizens will still be upset. But I think if we can at least say it wasn't the windows you just, I mean, obviously within a reason, some windows you have to turn in, but so, but go ahead, Mike.
It's a, we have a lot of people come up and ask for permits for things that we don't issue permits for. We're the first ones to tell them you don't need a permit.
Yeah.
Like painting our house, carpet, that kind of kitchen cabinets, don't need a permit for that. There is steps that we can take to make this a lot easier for everybody, you know, to be able to make it to where the, you know, the, well, money is like some of the other cities do. They pick and choose what they send to the county. If it's a new hot water tank, you still have to have a permit for that.
But it has to be inspected, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as we're not jeopardizing those things in this.
There's carbon monoxide, same thing with electric, you got electricity. Furnace changed out, that's maintenance, same thing there. And some of the other cities, they take that stuff and they don't turn that in to the county, they just keep it on record.
But it still passes inspection, it's still put in properly, but it doesn't have to go to the county.
So they still may need a per, what we need to probably make clear in this is you still probably need permits for a lot of things. Some of those permits aren't going to go to the county and the permits still need to be in place just to keep. So we can inspect it so that it's done properly and safely. And so that way that whatever it is, we know it's been done up to regulation.
That's two to where the, say in five years, something comes up because a hot water tank that was inspected has carbon monoxide leak. We got the certificate, we got justification, they're showing that it was inspected by an inspector. And then if it was because of that installation on, we know who did it. So we keep those indefinitely.
Well, no one's saying that the permits need to change. We're saying that there needs to be a word added there, one line, a box that says it's maintenance and therefore it doesn't need to go anywhere past here.
I, I think that we need to be cautious in the discussion on either suggesting or inferring that that permit is the tickler for the valuation increase. And, and that a change in our permitting process will mute that valuation increase. That's a separate unit of government that addresses that at the county level. And they may or may not be impressed. I understand what we're trying to do, but we want to make sure that that our citizens understand the intent. Ours is not to contribute to that, but you can't, we can't assure them that the county. What is their title? Appraiser might not come by on their scheduled tour, see a home with the fresh coat of paint and slap them with increased valuation. We, we can't mute that, we cannot stop that from happening.
Stayed low, why can't we?
Well.
If it's stayed low, it's maintenance.
I'll go, and I'll go back to what I said that caused heartburn on Friday. It seems that we might end up with our city attorney in litigation between what state says and what the county says and what we desire. But when you have different, differing levels of government, then it's, it's, I'm just wanting us to clarify before we just say we changed the permit or we don't send it in. And your property value won't go up because that appraiser may just come down.
Will still do what they're going to want to do. And whether we say want to do. And or not is not the issue. It's the issue is values are going to be what values are going to be based off what that appraiser says they're going to be. So.
To answer the mayor's question is then it would be on the taxpayer, it would be on that person's. They, they could challenge that if they think that was the reason. I'm not saying an appeal is an easy thing, but.
Boda.
That's how that would.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have what we need for that?
Yeah.
Done, okay.
Okay, city manager department.
City attorney.
Attorney, sorry. And so item number one on here is an ordinance adopting by reference standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities, 50th edition. Prepared and published in book form in 2023 by the League of Municipalities. League of Kansas Municipalities.
Mayor Commissioners, as you all know, of our citizens, every year laws are amended, created, changed, and our legislature passes those down. They're usually going to affect July 1st, but not always. And many of those laws affect municipal government and our League of Municipalities attorneys do a good job in getting those changes that, that apply to us out to us. And they do that in two forms, one standard traffic ordinance and the other is the Uniform Public Offense Code. What we're talking about right now is the standard traffic ordinance. The good news is there's only really about four changes that they sent our way for you to consider. And I'll go through them quickly. Section sixteen point three deals with lighting on equipment, actually additional lighting on equipment. And it's light you might see on a vehicle that is pointed towards the ground underneath the vehicle. And there used to be certain limitations on what the colors of those lights could be. That's been opened up and you can't have any shade of red, can't have it flashing, you can't have it visible to oncoming traffic. And so that, that's an ordinance that was, or a law that was already in place, but they just changed it a little bit. Section one seventy-nine spilling loads of highways prohibited. That's, that goes to trucks, cars, anything that's hauling something, trailers that may spill something onto the road. There is an ordinance against that. There are exceptions in that, and one of them is regular hay bales that has always been there. This Ben McKeer also exempts hauling cotton bales as well. So that's just an addition to an existing code. Code section one ninety-four driving while licensed canceled, suspended or revoked. The penalty section previously and for many, many years has always required judges to give mandatory jail time. Might be forty-eight hours, might be five days, but something. Those were removed by this particular change in the law. Any questions about those? My recommendation is to adopt these changes with the entire updated standard traffic ordinance. And again, for those, I know you are familiar, but for those who aren't familiar, that comes in booklet form, given to each of our officers and to court staff. Also, this year is going to be available electronic form. We're going to be able to put it on our website so folks can, can take a look on the website and find the STOs right there.
That's something. That's something we do every year. I mean.
Yes, this is, this is a change every year. We look at, I think this is the, if I'm not mistaken, the 50th STO coming out. Yes, it comes around about this time every.
Okay, so that being said, make motion, we adopt reference the traffic, the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities 50th edition, prepared and published in the book form 2023 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
I'll second that.
Removed and seconding. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we'll vote, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ganger.
Why, yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Spelman.
Yes.
So item number two is an ordinance adopting by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, 39th edition, prepared and published in book form in by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
Okay, give the same preface I did on the others. There's a little booklet that comes out with this as well, available to law enforcement, available to court staff, also be available electronically for the website for citizens to be able to reference. There are several changes here. I would be happy to go through every one of those if you want me to. It's not nearly as exciting as finance was, but it's, I will do it if you would like for me to, every one of it.
Who, who want to hear it?
You heard it on Friday.
I did it on Friday, but I, I know it's been long and I don't want to, like I said, there's no way I can make it exciting, but I would certainly do it.
This information is available to the public in what form?
It would be on the agenda, was it not?
Yeah, so, so I'm going to give the public, we're going to get it on the website when I get the electronic copied. And then each officer will get an electronic in a booklet form.
How soon will that be?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were talking about the changes or the, the result.
The, the changes in case someone wanted the nuance of change. Or. AD.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's just not, I didn't, I didn't want people to think it's something hidden.
How soon would that be?
How's, how soon?
Do you have it on the website?
As soon as I can get it all ordered.
Okay.
It's a, it's a process, you have to order it.
Okay.
Then we, they get it out just pretty quickly.
I would assume I get the electronic and then the books would come soon after. And I did read where I had to sign an agreement. And that will allow me to post our ordinance in any other, is that we want like an action item or anything with it so that people can see the chapters have changed for each year.
Well, make motion, we.
That being said.
That being said, you can make a motion adopting the, by reference, the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, 39th edition, prepared, published in a book from form in 2023 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
I'll second that.
Removed and seconding. Any further discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote, it is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gager.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Spelman.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any items the commissioners want to discuss?
Nope.
Is there any one signed up that would like to, from the audience?
So Kim Herter and Lloyd Holtz, they both signed up, but I'm not sure if the.
Has already.
Signed up to talk about other items.
Lloyd left.
Yeah, I think, well.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Kim?
Yeah. Ian, Ken, Eric, thirteen, thirteen-year-old first. At the last city commission, there was some, a good crowd here and people was really interested in what this commission and the public had to say. And your outside developers that were here, we couldn't hear. I know this commission asked them two gentlemen from Texas to face each other that maybe we could hear. We still couldn't hear and I'm sitting up here on the front row. We wanted to know what they had to say and I didn't pick up half of what those two gentlemen had to say. This commission used to have a P A and a mic here. These people had a mic and we could hear them. Sometimes it'd squeal on the other managers, they'd go turn down a little, tweak it. Why don't we have that? Transparency today is a big thing. The people here want to know and understand what's being presented. I asked this commission to seriously, you got an IT man? Whatever it takes, I think we need to hear what's going on. It, it's very frustrating just to get bits and pieces of it. Mr. Jennings, you're kind of soft sometimes, you're kind of loud.
I've had too many people come in and stow me about not being outspoken, so I project when I speak. And then people say, you're yelling at us and so.
You keep yelling because I'm not complaining.
Well, I've, I've, well, but we got a balance.
I can hear you Canyon, I know you're soft spoken, I am American. And some of the others are soft, but let's, let's get it to where we can hear and understand what's going on. I know a lot of them that I spoke to after the last meeting were very disappointed. I'm here, thank you.
Madam Mary. Madam Mary, could, could, could I, could I also insert into that the public meeting decorum? Another element of that is there was a lot, there was quite a, I don't like to say a lot, there was a significant amount of chatter in the gallery during that meeting that made it difficult also, even for us to hear things. So if, if, if we have, if we have people, we understand everybody has. You could do that, but, but functionally, just courtesy of when someone else is speaking, even hold your thoughts or step outside into the hall for further discussion. And then that way we're not fighting against the background noise there. We all work together, we'll get it done the right way.
We're working, we'll see what we can do, well. Best item on the agenda?
Set executive session. And this item is to recess into executive session to discuss the prior acquisition of real estate pursuant of K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B six for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property. And I did put the motion.
How long do we need? How long, how long are we going to need?
I don't, I don't know. Maybe, maybe ten minutes to start with. I think I kind of did a breakdown of the.
Do we want to do a city manager report first? Cause there'll probably be nothing.
Reminders and updates. There shouldn't be any action after this stuff.
Let's do the city manager update first and that will.
Okay.
Well, Tommy left, but as I say, the wastewater treatment plan is pretty well winding down now. This week they are going to be doing a clarifier valve and then, and then next week they're going to be doing the gas system startup. And then the mobilizing or the punch list and mobilizing equipment out here. So it's winding down. So if the weather's decent at the next work session, if you guys would like, we'll try to schedule to take you out there and give you a tour of what all was accomplished this past two years. So we received some more funding in the open rate settlement. And they'll be opening over the next few weeks here. Looks like between three different settlements, we'll get about fifty-four hundred dollars. The C clip, I, I know Friday I gave you guys a schedule for the C clip for Madison and it was supposed to start today, but there were some mobilization problems with the, with the traffic control. So now I hear tomorrow's the day. City staff did a stoplog training on South Summit. The stoplogs are for the flood control in the levees that block off the, the openings there at the bridges. So they did a really good job on that. They basically in two hours, I got, got it installed to the point where it would stop water. So that's, that's a kind of a good number to remember whenever we become in an emergency situation. And they're, I'm back on the wastewater treatment plant. There was estimated to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars left in our allowance that we had set up for the, those things that were unexpected things. And Rod, I don't know if you, where you've come up on it, but there is, there's a couple of pumps that are older that they, that weren't included in this project. And I think that's something they'd like to add into this since we have some bit of money left in the project. So I think Rod will be bringing some stuff to you here in the near future on that. But I just wanted to let you know that, that we did end up being, coming in under budget on that. But we do have some additional needs out there that are, that will, since we have some extra funds, would be a good idea to take care of those now than rather than later. And that's all I've got.
I'd like to make a motion, we recess into executive session to discuss the prior acquisition of real estate pursuant to K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B six for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property to include city manager Randy. Do we need Larry in there?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioners and those two for no more than, what, for ten minutes?
I'll second that.
Removed and seconding. If they were say I.
So that's seventy-nine?
Seven twenty-nine and a half.
Seven thirty, if you want to go thirty seconds to get in, but whatever.
This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to make a motion that we continue the executives, do I have to put the pursuit and do all that or just continue the executive session? Continue. Continue for another ten minutes with the same individuals. Second. Second.
Moving second, in favor, say aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are we going again?
I don't know. I didn't get a consensus on it.
My bad. Do it again. Do it again. Are we doing it again? Another five minutes? Can we do it in five? Can we do it in five? Seven. Seven. Seven minutes. Seven, three, or six?
We'll make it eight or nine.
That, motion, second. We have motion, I mentioned that we go another seven minutes into exec. Commissioner Jennings, second.
This conference will now be recorded.
30 seconds. 30 seconds, 49, we can do, open it back up. Oh, is it? You open. Send the bill to you.
Talked an awful lot today.
I think it's, most leaders back in, I'd say we make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We're moving second, we adjourn, we'll take it down.
In the morning?